Yes, sir.
All right, everybody is ready. We will call the October twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four work session for complicated board of education order. For education.
Yes, sir. So let's pray. Lord, thank the love and the blessings and giving us the ability to be here tonight, Lord, to serve you and to serve our community, Lord. I just, I want to send you praises tonight, Lord, and thank you for the hand of protection that you put over our community, Lord. Even with the devastation to the things that make us uncomfortable, Lord, you protected us. And, Lord, I just pray that through the storm and through the recovery, we are closer here and closer to one another. So thankful to be part of a community, Lord, that has blessed one another in love and supported one another. And we just thank you for being the driving force behind that, Lord. I just pray tonight's business is conducted in a professional manner and the decisions we make are pleasing to your side, Lord. Thank you for these board members, as well as Dr. Lee's and others who are here tonight, who come and serve our community day in and day out, through a storm, through good days and through bad days. And I just pray that your blessing on their lives. In your name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Bobby.
Thank you.
Uh, boy, it's dawned. I'll say we got Ms. Jacqueline Jowers here tonight. She's come to swing down this student and get her feet wet when she'll be in there before you know it.
She gonna give a speech?
I will give a speech. She had it earlier. She had to take me and rub her out on the desk and all.
She ain't gonna give a speech?
I don't think she wants to give a speech yet. We appreciate her being here. If you haven't had the chance to introduce yourself, talk to her, please do so before she leaves. Glad you're here. Uh, everybody's got a copy of the agenda in front of you. It's very simple since we just had a call meeting, not a lot, but uh, if there's any changes to the agenda, let me know. If not, can we get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I believe we adopt the agenda as presented.
Send Mr. Way on the way. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Lot. The board members appreciate y'all being here tonight. And Ms. Johnson had called and said she had an appointment out of town. She may or may not make it back. So we'll move forward. Welcome, Ms. Jowers. Thank you for being here. We'll uh, move with uh, adoption. We've done that. Indian Creek update. We have Mr. Chancy here, who's gonna give us an update about all the exciting things happening at Indian Creek. So welcome, Mr. Chancy.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for opportunity to be here to brag on Indian Creek, to share some things that we've been doing there. Some awesome opportunity to be able to meet such great school staff, students, parents, just a wonderful part of our school community and paying for the opportunity to be here. So we'll move forward there at the beginning. I came to you last year and told you about the twenty-fifth anniversary of Indian Creek Elementary from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and twenty-four. We closed out the end of our school year with our twenty-fifth celebration. I have some medals here or coins, really more like a challenge coin. They are the twenty-fifth emblem that we had made. We didn't get those in there at the very end of the year. We had our celebration. So I'm still having those and getting those passed out to everybody. If you need some more, we can get them. Not this good. We lost our pictures for that, for the twenty-fifth celebration, a couple more pictures of things that happened there in May. And really hate that we lost those because we had all of our former principals, some assistant principals, our former staff that were there. Our show choir performed songs throughout the twenty-five years of that time period. It was just a great night to be able to have a reunion of all of the staff members that have had such a great influence on Indian Creek Elementary. This summer, at the beginning of June, our leadership team had an opportunity to go with Brockston Elementary, as well as Hawkeville High School to Lissy. That was a great week. It's a very intense week, long days, a lot of diving into school improvement and protocols and things that we could do to continue to move forward in what we do for our students and our community. Some ongoing things that I've told you about before, our fly time with Catching Kids Hearts. Let's tie in with that. And our character education that happens each month. We meet as an entire school. Our staff all get involved with that to teach the character of word and to let our students know what that looks like. And as we also teach our core values of treating others right, making smart decisions, maximizing our potential each and every day with our students. Continuing our positive office referrals, our highlight system of just bringing positive reflection to all the things that our students are doing and our staff, as well as our birthday celebrations for our staff and our students each month. I tell you each time that I'm able to talk about this, I always brag on this program with our student teacher interns. I'm very, very thankful that we have this opportunity to have South Georgia State College putting this into place and we have the opportunity to put these students in action in our school to be able to um, put knowledge into them and to train them to become the teachers of the future and also to give us opportunity to be able to see where we've been able to add some great members to our staff if available. So those are, we currently have three student interns working in kindergarten, first and second grade. Three of our career professionals are working towards certification to become a teacher. And then we'll have three student teachers this spring semester. So some of those are from South Georgia State College and then some were from Georgia Southwest.
What was the difference between a student intern and a student teacher?
I think that's just a verb. It's, I would say when they're working now, those student interns are there. When I studied talk, we were in the school for bits and pieces of hours at a time. And then we came into the class we were going to be with in January for the second half of the year. And that was the first time we met that class. These student interns are there. They've been there since up in house. And they've been working in those classrooms the entire semester. So when they take over in January, it won't be new to them. It won't be new to our students. And it's a much, I think, a better transition for them and for us.
It's the first time I've heard that from an intern.
To our moment, we have six hundred and eighty-nine students in Indian Creek. A fair even distribution of female and male at forty-eight, fifty-two percent. Our Hispanic population at twenty-four percent, Asian at one. Our black population seventeen, white at fifty-five percent, and two or more races at three percent. Our staff, we've got ninety staff members. Fifty-six of those are certified, thirty-four are classified. There are thirty-seven homeroom classes. And then that's the breakdown of how many are in each grade level. We also been working on something where we're trying to recognize our students, our teachers, and all the work that they've done and the wisdom that they have and the wealth of knowledge that they have. And so in blue there, that's the number of years that we have in each grade level. So on our admin team, there's three of us. There's a hundred and forty-six years of education knowledge there. Pre-K's got ninety-two years, kindergarten a hundred and thirty, first grade seventy-nine years, second grade's got ninety-one years, eighth, ninth, and third, fourth grade seventy-two, fifth ninety-nine. And our special education, which includes our pre-K and our self-competitive classes, has a hundred and forty-five years. So that's something we've been trying to get our staff to really focus on and recognize them is the wealth of knowledge they have and the wisdom that they're bringing to our school and to our community. This is family night that we had at the beginning of the school year. Our back to school bash that we have each year. And this was an opportunity for families to come in, connect with our teachers, learn a little bit more about the new curriculum and the transition that we're making this school year and to know what the expectations are for each grade level. And then we transitioned out to the gym for a good night of fun with the slide and the dunk tank again. And had a cone of ice come in to help everybody cool off. But this is just a, a big hit for us and a great opportunity for us to have an impact on our parents and our students. We see our students all day, every day. We don't get to see our parents as much. So this is a great time to be able to connect with them, build those relationships. And we thought that's what we're going to be able to gain a lot of traction and be able to move forward is connecting with those things and making that a positive experience. And then they're happy and excited about their students being in the school. This was breakfast with buddies with our pre-K. That's always a big hit. They come in and have breakfast with our littles and engage in that. And that was a lunchroom full of folks that morning. And then this is the idea last year, was just really trying to think, how do we get our dads more involved? We see moms a lot. Not every case, but a lot of times it's mom that we see that may come to the parent's conference or may come to the school to take care of things. So just having that thought, how can we get our dads involved in what we're doing here at the school? So I had the idea of drop-offs for dad. And we didn't really know how it was going to go. We put out a Google form for them to respond. It was a really big hit. We had a group of dads each day come. And that's a few of those. And we, I think we had just about thirty-five dads that got involved and plugged in to getting our kids out of the car in the morning. Them seeing a positive role models in the mail and also being able to be inside of their dad in some cases to play luck in the door and get them out there at school. So that was a big hit. We're going to continue that this year and do it again. They really liked that. And you can tell that was some cold morning. So we were, didn't plan that officially, but that was a good experience for them to know what it feels like. You got to drop off them for about thirty-five, forty minutes, which is crazy. And then that snowball, of course, is, you know, what else can we do? That was really a great hit. Didn't know how it would go. Who else can we get involved? How can we get them involved? So we moved to athletics. So our baseball, football. We've got our tennis team cheerleaders. I think we had track. We had maybe some basketball players there. But we have multiple sports that got involved, come each day to open doors on another week. So that was very exciting for our students to see our athletes there and to see them in action. And then part of those features we lost from May was, of course, we didn't, once we got that snowball going, moms started wanting to be left out. So in May, right there, going into the week, I believe it was, the Mother's Day, we definitely got our moms involved. And that was a big hit for them. And that was part of those features we lost from May that got deleted. Don't have those, but they did get involved and had a great time with that. So we'll continue that and try to find some other ways to get other people involved to read our students as they come each day. Know Your Worth campaign. This is something that we're certainly passionate about and connect with and build relationships with our students. So we had a few different days throughout the county and our school where we wore our shirts, bring more attention to that. Our students wearing their shirts and helping them really know their value and what they mean to us and what their futures might look like. So it's a reading engagement. A few of those pictures there just shows some furniture that we've been able to purchase through our L4GA grant. Most of that has finally made it an end where it was set up our library in a different way than we were before. So really be an engaging place for our students to feel welcome to not only just come get a book from the library, but sit down and have a great time of reading and getting involved with that. Now, pre-K had a pet day or pet week. And Mr. Parker Bollender brought their pet dog. And that was reasons for pre-K. The while it was, he was there and just kind of seeing how students were interacting. We just took it and ran with it and asked him if he was available. And he was able to participate with our other students. And they came in where they could read books with the dog and just really have a good time and then decided about that. And then always with our learning, students are working super hard pencil paper, our computer based programs and churning away at that each and every day. But we also want to make sure that they're having the opportunity to have that hands-on learning, that they have some real world experiences and to see what this looks like and means. And try to put things into action for them to have a chance to explore with their learning. Just a few more pictures of that. So some upcoming events that we'll have before we close out this first half of the school year. Our red ribbon week next week. We'll do our trunk or treat again next Thursday. We'll have community involvement and parents and community members coming in to set up trunks for our students to go by for just a few minutes of trunk or treating during the day. Our Veterans Day program will be coming up. Our retired staff base getting lunch. And then, of course, our big hit, another family involved tonight, Christmas at the creek with our show choir and the Santa and all kinds of good things. This year, I just want to do with our exit model with Catching Kids Hearts as the launch. So I wanted to end with a launch with you guys. And just a thought, this picture here is at Indian Creek a few weeks ago. If you've been over there and you can recall, there's a lot of planted pines there next to the school. Those were all destroyed in a storm. And those trees snapped off and they began cutting those. And I was there early one morning in the sun rising near the east towards the, we're tied. And this is looking back towards the bus shop. We didn't have this view before. So I just thought about that when I pulled up, you know, how awesome that was and think about beauty from ashes and something that we didn't have before, but something that was really pretty that came out of not such pretty circumstances. And so I put that in there and I read that with you to leave you with this thought of the launch and pushing us forward. So any day on vertical is a good day. And that's what I always say. And I give thanks for my help. If you ask me, how are you? I'll answer great. Because in saying so, I make it so. And I give thanks that I can choose my attitude. Lots of events and experiences are like the weather. They come and go no matter what my preference. So what the heck, I might as well decide to enjoy them. For deed, there is a time for every purpose under heaven. And each season brings its own unique blessings. And I give thanks. And so with that, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for what you do for our students and for our community and giving us opportunities to do the things that we do to continue moving forward and making an impact on our community. And remember, every vertical day is a good day.
Thank you.
Fantastic job. And Mr. Chancy, I think it is fitting that we do mention that it's National Principals Appreciation Month. So we appreciate you being here. We got a slide. We're going to present our regular work session.
People do represent our principles?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jim, can I make one?
Yes, sir.
It seemed like twenty-five years ago. And I was sitting down, seeing living in the past. I just want the board to know things that are my head. Jesse, Ms. Dowd, maybe again, I know Mr. Wade again, with the dead Indian Creek. And I'd always tell Mr. Moore Johnson, what could change anything? If three votes could change the thing. But I think the board really struggled with what they named this school. And finally, Mr. Wade and Ms. Dowd, it's my revelation, they talked about Mr. Moore, who was superintendent when they built it. They talked about Van Davis, who'd been a great super, I mean, a great superintendent before. And they decided not to name the school for any living person. So I do, I remember that. So they came, so they struggled, they, that's, that's impressive.
Well, that's interesting. I've not heard that. Yeah. And then the Indian Creek is right there.
Right there.
Yeah. Well, that's great. Well, y'all did a good job in Indian Creek. And it's amazing that it's one of our older schools. So definitely needed. All right. Moving forward, we've got the uh, minutes from the previous meetings. We want to take a moment to look over those board members. If there's any changes, amendments that need to be made. If it pleases the board, we'll place those on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. Financial reports. Of course, we had the end of year report, last board meeting. So this is our first report for this fiscal year. This only about this fiscal year. So uh, see the cash balance there. End of month, funded equity, twenty-seven million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and two dollars and twelve cents. And I think it's important to note that fund equity is needed for when we are not drawing down tax dollars once all the property taxes have been collected and dispersed. And we go a period through the year where we're not receiving any local tax dollars. So we need that fund balance to carry us through as we have to make payroll and everything every month. So uh, that's why you want to carry a fund balance. All right. You see it's compared to last year this time. And that's the detailed document. This bracket, you want to provide a headsight on that?
We can go down the revenues. So the first part is your revenues. And you can see that as of September for this fiscal year, the revenue's at ten million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-five cent. So we're at twelve point three five percent of our budget there. Next section is our expenditures through the month of September. And our expenditures are at twelve million, seven hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-eight cent. So we're at this point fourteen point three six of our budget. And there we end with our fund equity for the month of September at twenty-seven million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and two dollars and twelve cents.
East Floss collections in September. And next month, it'd be interesting to see what it looks like. And East Floss is used for capital expenditures like construction, buses, computers. If it's a capital expenditure, we can use sales tax on it. But we can't use sales tax for salaries and those, those type of things. So it's capital purchase, we can use sales tax, but we can't use it like make payroll and such as that. And our current two big projects, the new board office, I did ride to the board office yesterday. They had the plastic going down over the slab. So it looked like they were getting ready to pour concrete. They were blowing off water off the plastic and then putting down the rest of the plastic to look like the plumbing was roughed in and the electrical was roughed in and they're getting close to pouring the slab. And then West Green, I rode by the project out there and they're just still clearing the lot. We did talk about groundbreaking with our team up here Monday morning. You know, we kind of thought maybe we let it get a little closer to more happening out there before we have groundbreaking, maybe November, December, sometime like that, uh, to look at doing something out there. Bus purchases. Of course, we receive funding from the state to purchase buses each year. And so this is, this is the purchase that will be done with funding from the state for two school buses.
And the, well, the funding that we'll be receiving is one hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. And the remainder of that purchase will be Sloss funded, which is one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and eight dollars. Okay?
Any questions about the bus purchase? We did, I sat down and met with Buddy today. And is he here? Our buddy is here. So if there's any questions. And we will have air conditioning on that bus. So, all right. Thank you for being here, Buddy.
Certainly.
Uh, system update. Wanted to provide the board an update of where we're at with recovery from the hurricane. Uh, I sent you all an email the other day informing you that we were moving forward with the fortables, the insurance company providing the fortables to George Washington. We currently have our ninth graders out at the middle school. They've done a great job. Both principals, it being National Principal Month, uh, they, they've done a great job. I've got to give Garrett and Abe and their staff, their teachers. Teachers have been so resilient. They, they just came together and made it happen. So we have our ninth graders currently at the, at the middle school. But as soon as these portable units are ready to be moved into, we're going to move the ninth graders back over to the George Washington Barbe Freshery campus. And meeting with Abe and Garrett and everyone involved, Mr. Mobley, that'll be, that'll be a good smooth move. We feel like lift the middle school, get back to normal operations and get the ninth graders back on their campus. I will note that I have throughout this week, because I was just curious, the drop-off time, the first day that we, we had the ninth graders out at the middle school, that it, there was traffic backed up and the traffic subsided at eight twenty-three. And then I went out a day later and it was, the traffic subsided by eight twenty. And then this morning, when I went out there, the traffic had ended by eight seventeen. So that was a big concern that the, that the traffic would be a big problem. And it looks like it's getting better as folks get used to the traffic while I'm there. Uh, so uh, we're moving forward with repairs at Satilla. I've got to give the fellow, Jason Witherspoon, who is the home-to-ground contractor for this group charter restoration that the insurance company employed. He's been here since a day or two days. I think the next day after the storm, he was here. And he's been on the ground. He's a contractor by trade. And he's been directing their efforts to get the schools usable again and ready for students to return. And uh, so I'll, I'll say, a couple of days after the storm, I rode out to Satilla and looked at it. And we're already, there was a bus van unloading with workers out there getting to work. So they've been working hard ever since a day or two after the storm. So.
What is the timeline of that getting finished?
Satilla, we were told, you know, I hate to be too firm with any timelines because we've learned through this whole, but they, he was projecting last week, the twenty-eighth, that Satilla students would be able to get back in those classrooms by the twenty-eighth, which was just one week in this temporary situation that we're in at Satilla. So hopefully that holds true. I'm not sure where that was at. I will leave talking a moment because he's got, he's been working closely with Jason the last few days. Uh, the Ninth Grade Academy, of course, it's had a lot more damage. It's unusable at this point. Uh, but they are repairing and they will get started. Mr. Mobley, you want to add?
Yeah, I can details anything. I, and updating, everything Dr. Lee shared, you know, on point with what's been going on. Just more recently, I know the question has come up, just a lot about Satilla. And I was out there a couple of hours ago, just to, if you'll allow me to, just to kind of share. A lot of folks that didn't go, don't realize how substantial the damage was as far as the building being able to be safely occupied. Um, so two of the wings at Satilla pretty much lost the entire membrane roof, which allowed water to come in, caused substantial damage for, I mean, it was standing in water. They had to remove all cimetex, all insulation, pretty much removed the entire membrane roof. Had to run hundreds of dehumidifiers around the clock for weeks, a week and a half probably steady. So where they're at now, they have installed the membrane roof. We're waiting on the system that locks the roof in place around the fascia. I hope that's here soon. It's all sealed up and good to go. They have one of the wings, cimetex back in, new LED lighting back in, insulation back in, and then moving on to the other wing that was more damaged. As I left, they were transitioning down there. It appeared if that arrives, the, the locking system, I think they could be on schedule. Obviously, we're waiting on equipment, but it's moving along very well. I do want to mention, the question's come up from a lot of folks about not just safety structurally, but air quality, you know, mobility and that kind of thing. They have a very thorough process, these charter restorations. They focus on air quality, surface. They wipe down every surface in any room that had moisture damage multiple times, do multiple rounds of kind of environmental checks. It's pretty high-tech. I mean, they've got equipment out, the sensors out everywhere. And they've been doing that multiple times, kind of opinion that. Um, I will say that there are those few areas left to be completed. There's a little bit of LED lighting left to be completed at Satilla. But they seem to be on track. I think within a matter of school days, if it stays on track, we can have people transitioning back into place. For those who don't know, what Satilla's done is they have consolidated grade levels in large cities like the gym, the lunchroom, the media center. And I know we've both been out multiple times. Those teachers have been spectacular. I mean, they had to skip the beat, instructions go. And it's, it's amazing what they have to do.
I, I think we need to give our staff at Satilla a lot of credit, the teachers, administrators, everybody, counselors, secretary, pair pros, teachers from other schools got in there last week and helped them set up. And they've taken the gymnasium and they converted it into the gender.
Kindergarten complex.
Yeah, they called it the.
Yeah, they got it.
The Gimpert Garden.
Gimpert Garden.
Yeah, they have signs, the Gimpert Garden. And uh, so they've got all the classrooms set up in there for their kindergarten. They're using these partitions. April Thomas and Family Connections let them use the partition she uses for the teammates. And so it, it really came together nice. And the students are learning. They're, they're teaching. The students are learning. They're engaged. And then she took it to the cafeteria. Same thing in there. They went into the cafeteria. They put the partitions up and they're teaching in the cafeteria. Different little classrooms are set up. And, and uh, I went outside on the playground and the art teacher had her class going on. I had a beautiful day, sunshine. The kids were having class outside. So they, they've made it work. And, and they're, they're teaching and learning and it's working well.
Yes, it's working good. As far as the Freshery campus goes, like Dr. Lee said, there's substantial damages there with roofing. with roofing, tech equipment, now you name it, we've had major issues there. Currently, as Dr. Lee said, they're there at the middle school and they're wide open at freshman campus, Logan's his team, they've been working to pull technology out of those classrooms and staging them for when mobile units get in, he's done a spectacular job of leading his team. Also, teachers have gone over and they're moving essential items that they'll need in the mobile units into the gymnasium, again, for cleaning and staging, so we'll be ready as soon as mobile units are replaced. And once we get out of there, probably Monday, they'll start the abatement process for that building where they will be removing material that is within the window of hazardous material and we'll have us back in shape where we are a perfectly safe environment there. That will take a little time, so we hope we can get them in the portable units, we do it right, and I think we will, we've seen plans and Logan reviewed those plans, we all have and we'll be working on that. But once that is completed, they will do the same things they did at Satilla, they'll be replacing sealantex, insulation, all the things that they did to make it not only safe, but just a people, you know.
That's right.
A welcoming, learning environment.
That's what Jason called today and wanted to know if we wanted to keep any of the old sealantex, told him go ahead and put the new sealantex through out so it was all spacious and span.
What they've got accomplished at Satilla looks really, really nice.
I did, I did share with Logan the diagrams of the board, we said, all right, could you share those?
Yeah, so the plan is right now, the plans that they sent, we've just got our hands on those, there'll be two mobile wings that are about one hundred eighty-two feet by sixty-five feet, so they're massive. And what they are is individual units that are pulled, basically pulled in and stacked beside one another. It's a seamless setup, hallway runs throughout, it's got bathrooms contained midway, there will be two of those units, you can see the bathroom bays there in the center. We've got a team out of Blackshear area, Pierce County area that are working up plans, working hand-in-hand with the city to make sure we got the power set and we're doing it exactly the way it needs to be spinned out. Also plumbing, water and sewer, a team out Pierce County also coming in and these guys seem like they're on their game and ready to go. Logan and his team are working on networking and making sure our kids have the technology resources they have. I feel confident when our kids and teachers land in those buildings, it's going to be a seamless transition, they're going to hit the ground running. And while they're there, we can operate our transportation system, drop-off, it's set up in a way in the backfield area where we should be very smooth, it shouldn't be a disruption to the transportation component. Chris Elrod and his team have a plan in place to be able to transition back from middle school where he has all his team right now above those schools. So it's going to be a pretty, pretty big facility there, mobile, but it's going to, I think it'll be, it'll be nice.
Yeah, I thought it would be much of a wise, that's a whole different look.
Oh, it's, it's, it's two wings and then there'll be one that's a little bit smaller, it's ninety-eight by sixty-five and it has some classrooms and one or two office spaces depending on how aged they sound.
It's a woman, my, and the board office one.
Hey, I will say in closing, just, I know you bragging on teachers, but I just wanted to take a second to talk about the team in this room. I know Dr. Lee's leadership has been, has been spectacular. Day two, I think he and I and Logan and Tracy, they all ended up here without phones at the same time, met and they've been boots on the ground the entire time. Chris and his team have been working hand-in-hand with law enforcement.
Yeah, that's great, wanting to, Chris and his team actually started pulling some time for the city because the city needed extra officers during the height of the crisis and the height of the destruction and therefore, a few days afterwards, our guys were working with the city to patrol the city, so thank you, Chris.
Just great partnership and even everybody here has been giving out food, working with not only our organization, but churches and other community groups and our teachers, I just wanted to brag a second. You know, as we were talking early on, Dr. Lee and I, we were thinking about who was meeting physical needs in our community, and it was our teachers and our churches. And I would dare to say our teachers were probably the first boots on the ground, making sure food was in hands. Many of our teachers I know firsthand were, they were coming out of pocket to buy groceries and meet families' needs, which is a spectacular testimony to the calling of education. And our teachers say, we're not called just Monday through Friday in the classroom, we're called when our kids have a need, we're going to find a way to meet it. And some of our brand-new youngest teachers were some of the first ones out there. So just hats off, I mean, I'm proud to be a part of the team, I mean, every member across the board, no matter what capacity they're in, they were taking care of our families, that's, it's pretty awesome. So I think that's testimony to Dr. Lee's leadership and his vision for taking care of our people and we're in a big business and that's, that's what we're doing. So we will continue to work to try to get our kids back in the setting that they deserve and we'll keep y'all posted along the way. Any other questions?
And it's maybe more Logan's question, by the way, around the county, some people got internet, some people don't, as far as our schools, does everybody kind of back up on what they need as far as internet services?
Yes, sir. David Phillips came in throughout, as soon as he could get out of his property down the road, he started going checking switches, phone switches and as the power came back on, things lit up and it took sometimes a little touch here and there to get it all working, audio enhancement, we could check once it, once everything lit up, Jonathan and Mitchell would check all that, in some cases that and write out. But as far as network equipment, synergics, we found one gateway at the high school pool of water, replaced that yesterday, we come right back online. I will give Terry Tatum, I want to mention his name, two days after the storm, he was in Satilla checking on equipment, pulling APs down, saving us a thousand dollars a pop during his things out and he's been back over there every day since they opened, trying to get teachers in order, so you know, as much as going on out there at his place with his family, he was right, right in the middle of it. You know, Steven, he had three trees on the house and as soon as he got his stuff managed, he was going door to door, checking on families in his neighborhood out in Cherokee Hills. So you know, we had a lot going on outside of work, but within the apartment, our people were hitting schools here and there, making sure things are coming back online and operating as they should. We're excited about the freshman campus project, we've been talking about how to get that network operational and so we've got a couple of our contractors we've been going back into and they're, they're ready to go as soon as we say the word, public synergics and we'll be able to get that out there, so I feel like it's going to be a good transition. Once those trailers are there and set up and we get, see the layout, what we can and can't do with network, we'll be ready, Logan.
Well, appreciate it, sir. Technology's been spectacular, everybody, Kim with curriculum, they brought all their principals together and other principals have talked about how we're going to instruct to make up for this, this time that students have been out. And one thing we have done, we're moving the state testing back as far back as we can move it. So we moved it back three weeks from when we were originally going to get it. So state testing will be done basically the week before the last week of school. So we'll have three, we lost three weeks, so we'll have three weeks of instructional time before they take the high stakes test at the end of the year. So thank Miss Miller and her team for doing that and it's been just all hands on deck and it's just, we've already decided. And I do want to mention the level of support we've had from outside the district, we had, of course, the governor was here a few days after the storm, I think about six or seven days after the storm, he came out to the EMA building out there and met with everybody and that was great support. I do want to give credit to Richard Woods, our state school superintendent, he came by, I guess it was like a week or two ago, maybe, a good solid week after the storm and so I loaded him up in the truck and drove him around and showed him several neighborhoods. I drove him down Boto Island and out towards, out towards West Green and the Sandridge area, drove him around out there a little bit and took him over to the golf club area that got hit real hard and touching woods and then Town Country Trailer Park. So I just want him to see firsthand, you know, the effects of the storm, so was grateful that he came, came by and we've been working with them to maybe modify some things and send them a list of requests or some things that they might could help us with at the state department. So then also, I did get a call from Miguel Cardona, U.S. Secretary of Education, I was at superintendent's meeting last week and got a call that, from Robin, that somebody was trying to reach me from Washington, she wouldn't give my number though. She was a hair number and I called him back, he said, this is the U.S. Secretary of Education, Miguel Cardona, and just calling to check on y'all, wanted to know if there's anything we could do and they would be, you know, looking to see if there's anything they can do to help us. So that was, that was a good, good thing. And then I do want to give, give a shout out to the Forsyth County Rotary Club, they brought barbecue two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and we fed over four thousand people and then the Forsyth Rotary Club sent down even more Boston butts. The first time they sent three hundred Boston butts and this, the second time last week on Thursday, they sent five hundred Boston butts down. And I want to say, Donson, we served up to five thousand plates of barbecue to the community and so that was all hands on deck, everybody in here was helping with that and it was just a, a good thing for the community to be able to help feed all those folks. And some of the people involved with that was the Forsyth County Rotary Club representative, James Burchett, I think represents Portico County, he's out of Waycross. The guy who really headed it all up was Lauren McDonald, he's a state rep from up there in Forsyth and he was the one that pulled it together. Steve Gooch, who's a rep from up that way, he came down. John Burns, Speaker of the House, he came over and he was here to help and so had a lot of support from the Georgia under the gold dome and so it was just a, a good thing for our people and our community at that time. So I want to thank those people and those groups who helped us with that. So, all right, that's our system update, so we will move forward with the rest of the agenda. Are there any questions, Foreman? Y'all agree? All right. Executive session, I do have personnel to discuss with the board and so we would move to executive session to discuss personnel and the equivalent or disclaimer action or evaluation of employees.
You just want to motion, move to executive session?
I'm going to be, I'll go to executive session for the person.
Motion, executive session, please, all the way. All right, very executive session.